Call to all the City Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1262, December 7, 2015. Let us stand for the role, for the pledge, please. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Cottle?
Here.
Herbie?
Here.
Holt?
Here.
Johnson?
Yes, here.
Saffal?
Here.
All members are present. Item number two is minutes. You've received copies of the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Item number three is presentations. The chair has no presentations tonight, so we'll move to item number four, communications from the public. If there's anyone from the public who would like to address council, please come forward, sign in, and tell us who you are, and then state your business.
Good evening to the mayor and the members of the city council. My name is David Gaston. I am a retired road driver from Roadway Express, and I've lived out here for over thirty years. I live on Hamlet Street.
Excuse me, what was the address, please?
On 11836 Hamlet is where I live at.
Okay.
There's a house with, I know there's two males and a female. Their address is 11843 Ken Road. And Officer Narrett, he's been involved in this here situation. They have like seven cars at that address, my neighbors tell me. Three of the cars are inoperable, and the seven cars will not fit in their driveway. So what they do, they bring their cars up on Hamlet, where I live at, and they park it on the street. Well, our houses are situated with the driveways to where, you know, someone parks in front of your house, you can't really back out. And the next door neighbor, she can't back out. You can get out, but you can't back out comfortable. And they are very adamant about not caring about the situation. I have gotten a heated conversation with one of them. I asked the guy, "Could you please back up a little bit? Let me have room to come out." He tells me he ain't moving. He's gonna park where he wants to park at. And, like I said, Officer Narrett has been down there and talked to him, and Officer Narrett came back and told me, basically, they told him they didn't want to hear what he, they had to say. And this is causing a problem in our community. I've been out here for over thirty years. I've had neighbors come and go, some leave because of death. I've got Spanish neighbors across the street. I've got African neighbors next to me, and it's a diverse community. And no one has a problem. This only started after the Spanish neighbor, she goes to work early in the morning. And she got up one morning, and here's like six or seven guys, she said, out there with flashlights, walking around, looking at people's cars. Well, two doors down from me, this lady, she works for the United States Marshals Department, and her car was broken into. I've had my granddaughter's car broken into. The Spanish people had their car broken into. And ever since the, they saw these people walking around with flashlights, these other people, now they bring their cars up there. And it's causing a big problem in, in that particular area. We can't just back out. If you hit the car, then you're, you're at fault. I don't want to hit nobody's car, but I'd at least like to be able to back out and feel comfortable that where I can back out, you know, on the other side of the street to turn my wheels, you know, to go the direction I want to go in. And we can't do that. And they continue to bring those cars up there, but yet still, like I said, now, I have not went down there. But Officer Narrett did say that they told him, the reason why they parked them cars up there, because they have so many cars that they, they don't fit on their driveway. I mean, oh, excuse me. I don't, uh, but that's not our problem, even though they have a right to park anywhere they want to, but you're causing, you're causing an inconvenience to the people that live there. And I'd like to see something done about it, or something, if two or three of their cars that, that are there, if they're not operable, they should be moved. And you get rid of them, then, then they got room to park down there. And I thought I would come up here on my, you know, own, and then plus Officer Narrett, he had said, "Well, why don't I come and present this to the council? And maybe we can get something done and get these people back where they live at." Because where I live at on Hamlet, you have to walk a complete block down to Ken Road. And then you gotta walk at least four houses to the left to get to their house. And they can park them cars on Ken Road if they wanted to. But no, they come up there where we, we live at and park them, and it's just causing a big inconvenience.
Okay, Mr. Gaston, um, just one question.
Yes, sir.
The cars, are they, generally speaking, when we have parking issues, it, it's, happens more after, after working hours when people are home than during the day? Is that pretty much the same case with you? Are they there all day long?
All day long, all night long, you know? They come and go at different hours. It's, it's no set time. There's one car right now that's parked down there by the stop sign at Hanover in Hamlet. Of course, that's not my problem there, because that's not even close to my house, per se, you know? Because I'm just two houses from that corner. But the other car that comes up there, there's about two more that comes up there, they park right in front of my, right in front of my house, at the edge of my driveway.
Okay.
You know? And it's just a big inconvenience. And then the lady next door, she's got a big, long vehicle, because she's got three, three kids. Well, she can't back out and feel comfortable anyway, because you gotta watch what you're doing, you gotta this and that. And if you bump a car, there you are. And this is the first time in thirty years I've ever had, had any problem in, in our community. We watch each other's houses, we all get along, we share food. We never had any problem until these people here start bringing their problems up here to our street.
Okay, sir. So your name and address and phone number, are they on the sheet there in front of you?
Yes.
Okay. The city manager will take note of that and look into it, and we'll be back in touch with you. Thank you very much for coming to present this.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hodges?
Okay, I'll try to indicate some issues that we'll have to look into and see how it can be addressed. First, you know, when you indicate that the cars are inoperable, they may very well be inoperable. If they are, we got codes that say you can't have inoperable vehicles. But when we determine whether or not a car is inoperable, we have to be able to see that it is physically inoperable. So if it has a flat tire, if it's clear that an engine is not there, or something like that, it'll be declared inoperable. But if it, if it's just merely something that one knows is not able to run, that's not gonna be sufficient. So that's one of the issues we'll just have to deal with. Hopefully, you know, we can go out and identify an inoperable vehicle. But when we cite a vehicle for being inoperable, we gotta be able to stand before a judge and confirm that it's inoperable, not that we believe it's inoperable. So that's the first point. The second point is, we do have regulations in terms of parking too close to a driveway, and we can look at that. And there are different ways that we have addressed that in different neighborhoods. Some, we have actually posted, you know, the no parking from this point forward. That works in some cases, doesn't work in all cases, because sometimes you just don't want the sign up there, you know? That, that's just not good-looking in some cases. There are other situations. We've painted the yellow no parking notice on the curb, which is a less obvious obstruction for some, but it still gives notice that you can't park this close to a driveway. So that's something that could be looked at. As far as the vehicles parking in a certain area, there's probably not a lot you can do in terms of whether or not somebody can park, even as you say, well, sometimes they park it from the house. As long as they're moving within seventy-two hours, there's probably not a lot that can be done in that case. But from the issues that you just raised, I say, okay, you certainly got the inoperable vehicles, and you got the parking too close to a driveway issue. So between our Public Works Department and our Police Department, we'll get with you. We'll try to see if there, you know, some alternatives. We may not be able to solve it all because of the issues I raised, but we may be able to make some headway to address it to some extent. But we will get back in touch with you and try to do something about it.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to issue, to item number five, reports of standing committees. First standing committee is the Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Cottle.
I have no report this evening, thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Cottle, any questions for Councilwoman Cottle? Hearing none, Councilwoman Cottle, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session on the fourteenth. Do you have any to add?
No, thank you.
Next committee reporter is Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Uh, yes, thank you. Couple of things. First of all, citizens should be aware that once the holidays are over, we have a tree recycling program in Forest Park. You can drop your stripped trees, take off all lights and ornaments and such, and you can dispose of them at Kemper Meadow Park during the week of December twenty-sixth through, well, more than a week, December twenty-sixth through January tenth. And also, if you have lights from your trees that you would like to recycle, the Great Parks is also doing that. You can drop those off at their visitor's center on Friday, January eighth. And finally, I want to mention that I was also at the tree lighting ceremony this evening. And last evening was the beginning of Hanukkah, so I wish all of our Jewish residents happy Hanukkah. We've got Christmas coming up. All of my Christian friends and Christian residents, happy, Merry Christmas. And I do want to say that, that Hanukkah is also known as the Festival of Lights. And recent things that have taken place in San Bernardino and in Paris may give us pause and make us think that we're living in a time of great darkness. And I would hope that we would all use the inspiration of the Jewish Festival of Lights and of Christmas to inspire us to send forth the message of religious tolerance, racial tolerance, peace, and justice, and joy. Thank you.
Questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none, Councilwoman Herbie, I have three items on the agenda for you for the meeting on the fourteenth. Reappropriations ordinance, salary ordinance, and the 2016 budget. Do you have any to add?
No, sir.
Thank you. Next committee reporter is Community Development Committee, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report this evening, but I would like to announce one thing for our residents. For those of you who may not know, recently, the storm water billing has been shifted to the waterworks. So you should be getting notices over the next week that indicates that. Every, every resident now will have their storm water billing going through the waterworks just as well, just like their recycling or their rubbish. So slight change, but it does create an opportunity to get better compliance in making sure that our storm water reserves are correct and up to date. Another note, I just wanted to publicly welcome our newest council member, Ms. Collins. Great job, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing none, Mr. Burns, I have two items on the agenda for you for the work session. First one is solid waste and recycling update, and the second one is zoning amendments for bars and restaurants. Do you have any to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, next committee reporter is Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
I have no report at this time, whereas I have not met with the Law Committee yet. But I do look forward to meeting with them and addressing the many issues pertaining to Forest Park and the laws that are working for us and the ones that might need a little tweaking. So I look forward to hitting the ground running after the new year. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session on the fourteenth. Do you have any to add?
No.
Next committee reporter is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
Good evening. I do not, I don't have a human resource report, but I would like to remind everybody that on this coming Friday, December the eleventh, at seven o'clock, the holiday decoration contest will take place. You still have time to get your lights up. Let's light up the city this year. And as I said, it will start at seven o'clock this coming Friday. If you still want to get in for the certificates or the awards for the lights, you can call Again, that number is 513-595-5202. And we look forward to seeing the City of Forest Park of Lights on Friday, December the eleventh. With that, it concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none, Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not, thanks.
Thank you. Next reporter is Public Improvements and Facilities, Councilman Southall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. I do not have a report for Public Improvement and Facilities, but I would like to bring attention to an announcement of an event that's coming up shortly after we come back from recess. And this is the Forest Park Business Recognition Breakfast, which will be held Tuesday, January the twelfth, 2016. New location, Jack's Tavern and Restaurant at 1081 Smiley Road. The doors will open at 7:30 a.m., and the breakfast will be at 8 a.m. and program following or during the breakfast. The emcee will be WKRC TV Local Twelve News Anchor Liz Bonas. Invitations will be mailed out later by the staff. That's the end of the announcement and the report that I have, Mr. Mayor. Any questions, I'll be happy to field them.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Southall? Hearing none. Mr. Southall, I have one item on the agenda for you for the work session, utility right, right-of-way fees. Do you have any to add?
Not at this time, sir, I do not.
The next item on the agenda for report is General Government Relation and Communications Committee, that's my report. I have no report, except to state that at the next meeting of council, I will have the holiday calendar dates for which the courts will be in session. Now, within my report, I'll answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, we go to item number six, mayor's report. I, too, would like to attend, obviously, the tree lighting ceremony this evening, and I would like to thank the members of the Parks and Recreation Commission for having put that, done that annual event. As usual, it was well-attended, and I believe that the young people really enjoyed themselves. And secondly, with your permission, Mr. Southall, I would announce that the, on Saturday, December nineteenth, at eleven o'clock, starting at eleven o'clock, we will hold the annual breakfast with Santa at the Frish's on, at Wynton and Smiley. That would conclude my report. I would answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, we move to item number seven, the city manager's report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. I'll report five things. First, our community newsletter, we label as the progress has been completed. It's available on our website. There are also hard copies available at the municipal building and a couple other locations. But the latest issue of our newsletter is available now. And it will also indicate some of the holiday programs, as well as some of the closings and hours of operation. Also want to mention to council that we have provided you a memo that we have listed as our IT, our information technology system access, and it will update you on the access for the use of the telephone, access of the building, things along that line. So if there are any questions about that, you can get with me or get with our IT system administrator, and we can address any additional questions, but everything is pretty much in the memo. I will also report that the Records Commission meet, met this evening at 7:30. There will be minutes of that meeting, and we should be able to provide that to council and the rest of the public tomorrow, at least the draft minutes until the final minutes are approved. We'll also be providing council with a brief labor negotiation status report. It'd be important for council to take note of that, since we will probably be in fact finding at the very least. It's possible that we could have a requirement for council to take action before the end of the year. You just don't know with the status of, of negotiations. But it does appear that we'll at least be in fact finding. We may be in arbitration, we may get things settled, but we are in, in negotiations with our fire department and our public works department. So again, we'll provide you a memo of that. Typically, labor negotiations are a matter of confidential information for council until you take a final vote on whatever it is presented at the public, public meeting. And then finally, I will report that all the departmental reports have been completed. They've been included in the council packets. They've also been placed on file with clerk of council for public inspection. So that would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Hodges. We move to item number eight, other reports, the first of those being the law director, Mr. Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the last council meeting, I had the opportunity to review and comment on the tablet computer usage policy with Mr. Silber. Also had an opportunity to review the contract to purchase real estate with DTZ, and also to update you on a few matters. We have administrative case involving Forest Fair Village. We are down to one final item to be fixed. Apparently, the alarms are not working as originally designed. Mr. Nacuzzi is on top of that, and we hope to have that resolved within the next couple weeks. And also, several months ago, there was an individual in town who had damaged some city property, fencing, when he lost control of a motor vehicle. I was instructed to and did file a lawsuit against the individual. We've obtained a judgment, and then, that was December second. And then today, I was contacted by the car owner's insurer, so hopefully, we'll be able to get paid relatively quickly for that. It's in excess of $5,000 of damage, so we should be able to recover that. That is the end of my report, unless there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the law director? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Wykoff. Next reporter is clerk of council, Ms. Huffman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance number nineteen dash 2015 and resolution numbers forty-five dash 2015 through forty-seven dash 2015 were posted as required. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for clerk of council? Hearing none, thank you, Mrs. Huffman. Next item on the agenda is new business. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time only by title. Ordinances number twenty dash 2015 and twenty-one dash 2015.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title only. Ordinances number twenty fifteen, twenty, twenty fifteen, and twenty-one, twenty fifteen. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Just to let people know, the law requires that we post this for a certain number of days prior to the meeting in order to be able to read this by title only, and that was done.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Saffal?
Yes. Motion to suspend the rules passed 7-0.
First item on the new business is item A, ordinance number twenty dash 2015. Would the clerk please read that ordinance for the first time by title only?
Ordinance number twenty dash 2015, an ordinance adopting John Earl Wykoff, attorney-at-law as solicitor, law director, and prosecutor, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the provision of legal services.
I believe that's to be voted on at the next meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. The next item is item B, ordinance number twenty-one dash 2015. Would the clerk please read that ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number twenty-one dash 2015, an ordinance appointing Darren E. Ny, attorney-at-law, as public defender and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the provision of legal services.
And again, this ordinance will be voted on at the next meeting on the twenty-first. The next item is a motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolutions number forty-eight dash 2015 and forty-nine dash 2015 by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we read, that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolutions number forty-eight dash 2015 and forty-nine dash 2016 by title only. Is there a discussion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Just that these were posted as required.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Collins?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Saffal?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules passed 7-0. First item on the resolutions, item D, resolution number forty-eight dash 2015. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number forty-eight dash 2015, authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Deborah K. Brown Gaines to serve as magistrate of the City of Forest Park Mayor's Court.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
It's been moved for passage of resolution forty-eight dash 2015.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution forty-eight dash 2015. Is there any discussion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution is similar to the ordinances that we just discussed, however it is for the magistrate, which is typically done by resolution. The current contract agreement through 2015 is as follows, for the compensation of the magistrate, it shall not be, excuse me, at an annual rate of nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand and fifty-seven dollars or cents, payable in equal monthly amounts, or such that, such other pay periods agreed to by the director of finance and the magistrate. So this is just a re-upping of the magistrate's contract and establishing her rate of pay. And with that, I would urge adoption of resolution forty-eight dash 2015. Thank you.
Correction?
Sure.
You said not.
Should be yes.
Shall not.
Thank you. Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution forty-eight dash 2015?
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Saffal?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Resolution forty-eight, twenty fifteen, passed 7-0. Next item on the agenda is resolution number forty-nine dash 2015. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number forty-nine dash 2015, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a voluntary early retirement incentive program.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I move adoption of resolution number forty-nine dash 2015.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution forty-nine dash 2015. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Um, yes. In December of 2012, the city adopted a voluntary early retirement incentive program, we call V-RIP, that was designed to help in the transitioning of some of the staff retirements in our organization over the next five years. And although the changes in the retirement system have been implemented, the consequences of those changes are still being felt in the city. And because of the changes in the pension system, we have a number of employees who, in order to lock in certain of their retirement benefits, would, would be seriously considering retirement. These employees would probably continue working for a few more years if the benefits that they've already earned weren't in jeopardy. And so we're planning to reinstate the V-RIP program again in 2016, so that these employees can proceed with their retirements and lock in their benefits through the pension system, and then resume working for the city. Employees wanting to participate in the program would need to enroll before July 31st of 2016. That way, we'll be able to continue to use their specialized skill sets at a reduced salary during the employee's duration of the program. The V-RIP allows an employee to retire and be rehired at seventy-five percent of their former salary for up to five years. And this allows the employee to draw their pension based on the Ohio Public Employee Retirement System rules as the time of their retirement. OPR still controls all of the arrangements, and under their guidelines, the increased time under the V-RIP goes into a separate annuity without increasing the number of years that the employees
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution forty-nine dash twenty fifteen. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, in December of, uh, two thousand and twelve, um, the city adopted a voluntary early retirement incentive program, we call V.R.I.P., that was designed to help in the transitioning of some of the staff retirements in our organization over the next five years. And although the changes in the retirement system have been implemented, the consequences of those changes are still being felt in the city. And because of the changes in the pension system, we have a number of employees who, in order to lock in certain of their retirement benefits, uh, would, would be seriously considering, uh, retirement. These employees would probably continue working for a few more years if the benefits that they've already earned weren't in jeopardy. And so we're planning to reinstate the V.R.I.P. program again in two thousand and sixteen so that these employees can proceed with their retirements and lock in their benefits through the pension system and then resume working for the city. Employees wanting to participate in the program would need to enroll before July thirty-first of two thousand and sixteen. That way, we'll be able to continue to use their specialized skill sets at a reduced salary during the employee's duration of the program. The V.R.I.P. allows an employee to retire and be rehired at seventy-five percent of their, uh, former salary, uh, for up to five years, and this allows the employee to draw their pension based on, uh, the Ohio Public Employee Retirement System rules at the time of their retirement. O.P.R. still controls all of the arrangements, and under their guidelines, the increased time under the V.R.I.P. goes into a separate annuity without increasing the number of years that the employees, um, are credited for retirement. So I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Is there any further discussion on resolution? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution number forty-nine dash twenty fifteen?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Resolution number forty-nine twenty fifteen passed seven zero.
Next item on the agenda, item F, resolution number fifty dash twenty fifteen. Would the clerk please read this resolution in full?
Resolution number fifty dash twenty fifteen, a resolution authorizing the disposal of surplus confiscated and obsolete property. Whereas the Council of the City of Forest Park desires to dispose of surplus confiscated and obsolete property, and whereas city council has determined a need to dispose of certain surplus obsolete or confiscated items, including miscellaneous outdated equipment from the fire department, ranging from sirens to radio systems, computers, printers, and miscellaneous items collected throughout all city departments, and a worn-six drawer wooden desk collected from the Public Works Department. And whereas, city council has determined that the disposal of said obsolete surplus and confiscated property may be made through an auction recycling, through Clean Lights Recycling, negotiations with anyone expressing an interest in the property and/or, uh, refuse disposal. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, section one, that miscellaneous outdated equipment from the fire department, ranging from sirens to radio systems, computers, printers, and miscellaneous items collected throughout all city departments, and a worn-six drawer wooden desk collected from the Public Works Department, as detailed in exhibits A, B, and C, attached heretofore and made a part of this resolution, are hereby declared as surplus obsolete and confiscated or confiscated property and of no further value to the city. The sale of said property is authorized without further bids, which is in the best interest of the city because of the minimum or no value associated with said property. Section two, that the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to use any alternative deemed necessary to dispose of said obsolete confiscated and surplus equipment. Said alternatives may include but are not limited to auction, recycling through Clean Lights Recycling, negotiating with anyone expressing an interest in the property and/or refuse collection. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number fifty dash two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution forty-nine dash twenty fifteen.